You ready Kathy? Okay, call this work session to order, October 18th. Open for visitor comment. Nope. There, yup, I think I heard some. I think it is actually working.
Yeah, it's on. It's a volume? Is there a volume on that? No?
Oh, there you go. No?
Sit over on the side there. Three minutes are just about up.
Alright, so um...
Could you state your name?
Jenny, Assistant Planner, Associate Planner, excuse me. Um, so tonight, there's a resolution on for the Wayfinding Master Plan. Um, I just wanted to use this time really quickly to make sure there are no concerns or questions. Otherwise, I hope it gets adopted tonight. Um, I do also have one other thing to note. Um, Bert and Sue Mueller of the Lions Club are here.
Yup.
They would like to make a request about service groups being on the welcome sign. Um, they're representing the Lions Club. Um, and I just thought it would be appropriate for them to talk about why they think that's important. So if they could come up and...
Yeah, let's have him use that. You can sit down if you want Bert, over there.
Glad to be here, I think I should, as a disclaimer, point out that Rick was a former student of mine, so...
That's right.
My name is Bert Mueller, I live at 340 Hankins Drive in St. Helens, and I'm a member of the St. Helens Lions Club. And the Lions Club is an international service organization. One of our members found out that the city was planning on putting welcome signs at the, on Highway 30 on the outskirts of town. And, um, it is somewhat customary with many cities to, on the welcome signs, to include the logos of the major service organizations in the town. And it's sort of a, indicates something about the character of the town, and it's always a nice thing there. The logos are, because they're international organizations, they are recognizable by a large number of people, and it's sort of symbolic of the goodwill of the community, or the character of the community. And the ones we're dealing with here, we've contacted the Kiwanis and the Rotary Club. So the Lions Club, the Kiwanis, and the Rotary Club are three of the biggest service organizations, have thousands and millions of members worldwide. And you see them in most cities. So, it is our suggestion, and it'd be really nice, we think, if, if those logos were included on the welcome signs. Now, there's a question about which logos to include, and there is a distinction. The three service clubs are registered with the state as nonprofits. And there are three types of nonprofits, there are religious organizations, there are mutual benefit organizations, and there are public service organizations. And, uh, the organizations like the Elks and the Moose are mutual benefit associations, they're for the benefit of the members in various ways. Public service organizations are devoted almost exclusively to serving the public in some form or another. So we do a lot of charitable work locally, and we're involved in a lot of projects. And, um, had some contact with Mr. Morton in regard to the McCormick Park exercise stations. And, so, we also do work statewide and regionally and nationally and internationally. So I think it would be a nice thing to do to include these logos on the sign, it would be, um, something that would add to the, to the atmosphere, or whatever you might want to say. I have some copies here of the logos, if you want to look at those.
And just to add, it would be my request that I get kind of a, a direction on, you know, if the council feels that's a good idea to move forward with. It doesn't necessarily need to change the adopted plan, but it would be nice to know that, so that when we do go to engineering of the actual sign, that we can incorporate room for said logos, so...
Now, these are copies, and the first one, Lions Club is moving. And, uh, I got the other copies off the internet, of course they protect their, their logos. They're not made for perfect copies, so the Kiwanis is sort of fuzzy, and the Rotary is distorted. The word Rotary wouldn't be on there, and it would be, uh, a little more difficult.
Thank you Bert.
Well, I, yeah, we appreciate all you guys doing in the community, Bert.
Should I respond to Jenny's?
Yup, that's what I was getting ready to do too, go ahead.
What, there is a, this is, might be a bit of contention, but there is a sign between Columbia Boulevard and St. Helen's Street on, um, on a, I think it's the railroad right of way, and that's the Kiwanis sign. And it says St. Helen's Kiwanis, or whatever. Is, since that is already there, and I know that some of the welcome signs that, you know, we've done in the past, was like, uh, had some big hurdles of putting those welcome signs, that one welcome icon up that, uh, I think the Arts and Cultural Commission pushed. And so, the hurdles were with the, uh, with the, with the railroad. And ODOT Rail, as well as ODOT. So, we have a sign up now, and it's a pretty large sign. But I believe it's just the Kiwanis sign, and I don't think there's anything else there with service clubs. Could they be added to that sign to, to help negotiate just the install, installation and that kind of thing? It's, it's in a very key place, uh, it needs some upgrades, uh, and I-
Verify the location again?
On the highway?
I can- On Highway 30, between Columbia Boulevard and St. Helen's Street, in front of the Chamber of Commerce Building. Basically, if you're looking at-
Is it a banner?
Doug, can I clarify that?
Sign.
Let me finish.
Oh, okay.
And then, and it's a, it's kind of like a kiosk, it's a, a plywood sign that's been there for years-
Okay.
-that the Kiwanis put up.
I think I can answer it.
And it's, it's, it's big.
Yeah.
And it seems to me like it would be appropriate for all service clubs to be recognized on that, in that area. Uh, it's just an ideal spot for it, a lot of cars are stopped for the, um, stoplight. And it seems to me like it'd just be a, a good place. Keith can reflect on that, because he was around when the Kiwanis put that sign up.
So that is actually a, a service, uh, work deal, it's for cleaning that area, that's what it's for. It's that we've adopted, the Kiwanis has adopted that stretch there, and they clean it every spring. So, that's, that's why that particular sign is there. But, I, I agree, it is a good spot for everybody's sign to be, because that, everybody is stopped right there also, with the chamber and everything, so... But, e- either way, it could be, I mean, like I say, I, I see the, the benefit in putting on our, our banner sign also, so...
The Lions Club considered, uh, just got the sign in that same location, that community building. They decided against it though, because-
Bert, Bert, we're gonna ask you just to speak in-
You gotta speak on the microphone.
Yeah, 'cause we, we are recorded here, sorry about that.
The Lions Club looked into putting a sign up there too, but we were concerned in that, a lot of people have driven by there and have never noticed the sign. Because, you know, it's traffic, uh, moving, and although people are stopped there, you really don't, you know, I hadn't noticed a Kiwanis sign until somebody said it was there. And so, um, you know, the, uh, logos on the entrance to the city would be, I think, something that you might, might be a little more noticeable.
Okay.
Through this, um, planning process too, we did outreach to ODOT for that very same issue of how do we get new signs built? And one of the questions was, can we take the existing signs that are non-conforming now and replace them with new signs? And the answer was an outright no. So, enlarging a sign that may have been put up in a time where they didn't have strict rules is probably out of the question.
Okay.
Just from ODOT's perspective. Um, but we can permit new signs, we just have to go through the right permitting process, um, which is part of this implementation, so...
Do we have a, do we have an area that you're thinking of for, uh, the signs for the welcoming to the community?
Yeah, I would, um, refer you to the sign location plan-
Okay.
-in the appendix of it.
Got it.
The, basically, near Gable Road and the other northern end, um, just kind of near city limits, to enter from those.
Yeah, I hear that other mic coming on. It's a good thing. Kathy, you wanna turn that, there you go. The, the volume's definitely up on that one now Kathy. So, um, so it sounds like Keith and Doug are both for it?
Yeah, and-
Susan?
I'd like to see examples of what it would look like.
Yeah, and we would work through the engineering of the sign at that point too, and tha, and that would be public. We wouldn't do any installation without prior, but, um, you know, we want to make sure you approve of the sign design.
So I've got to go back on Bert's recommendation of integrating the service, um, base groups on, on one kiosk type sign? Or did he want, did he, did he suggest just one sign for Rotary and, or-
No.
And one sign for Lions, and one sign for Kiwanis? How, you, do you envision it all three of them being on one, or if others-
With this logo here, kinda?
Perfect.
Yeah, it also reduces sign clutter, which is one of the goals of this plan.
Sorry Kathy. So, um, I think you've got a, a yes to continue, yes.
Are there just any other general questions about the plan for tonight? While we're on it?
No.
Okay, great.
And Bert, I want to thank you for all you do in the community, you and the Lions. Uh, see you guys out putting up flags all the time, taking them down, um, and you're still a Lion. I like it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other visitor comments? Okay, first quarter communications report, Crystal. Tina, did you want to come up? Hold on, Crystal. Uh, I do believe it works, do we have the mic available? Oh.
Tina Curry Consulting.
Whoa. Yes, it's a little hot.
So, I just wanted to give a very brief feedback on Halloween Town activities that are going on. And, um, this past weekend, we had record crowds here in St. Helens. The vendors that were in the City Hall Square had record sales. And the businesses that are reporting also have record sales, are having record sales. This weekend, we have coming up the rally cars that are coming. We have musical entertainment, we have a lot of community activities that are going on. And, um, the feedback that we're getting is, is super positive online. And, uh, yesterday, we got contacted from Fuji Television through New York. So, we're getting, we're getting media coverage from as far away as we can.
That's, that's awesome, that's good news.
So, um, just this morning, we got on Buzzfeed again. So we're getting tremendous amounts of branding and, and tagging from across the country, in the world actually. And, um, we decided to put a map out here with pins on it, and we have practically every country, uh, you know, visiting us during this timeframe. So by the end of the month, we'll see if we don't have a dot everywhere, but we have a lot from, of course, all over the US. But then, you know, China and Iceland, and just, just places you would not expect people to, uh, you know, to come from. We've had comments from people from like Scotland, I was watching the live feed of the pumpkin lighting, they're like, "How do we get t-shirts sent to us in Iceland?"
Really?
Yeah, so we're getting great, positive feedback. And our family that won the ultimate fan, uh, competition was actually a, a family of five generations that came to see the cast at the meet and greet, and they were just thrilled and-
That's awesome.
Yeah, the grandmother was in the wheelchair, but they had this great, uh, conversation with the cast, and they were super happy. So, overall, I would say ninety-nine percent of the people that, that came here had a great time. We're getting tons of positive feedback on Facebook, and, um, we're just continuing to add, you know, a little bit here and there towards the end of the month. And we have Diana, Diane Franklin coming at the end of the month, and she's going to be-
That's the twenty-eighth, right?
She's gonna be one of the official judges for the World Street Parade, and she's gonna be joined by Harriet from-
Good, I really like her. She's a kick in the pants, yup.
Made it happen, without them, nothing does, so, Crystal- Councillors that came down and pitched in, it was really, made the weekend super successful. Sunday was just amazing day with the weather. So, that's all I have to say, do you have any questions?
Job well done.
Yeah.
I mean, really extremely well done. And I, I, I like, you know, what I saw is the incorporation of, of many, many groups-
Yeah.
-pulling together, pulling in the same direction, and working together-
Yeah.
-to pull that off, very nice.
I have to say the museum is a stellar success. People are loving that museum that the carnival sponsors, so it's very, it's a filthy good.
I would just like to say, I think we have an entity messing with our tech stuff right now, as we speak.
Did you see the spirit on the Facebook page? Someone captured the spirit of Halloween Town.
Wow.
Did you see it?
No.
The whole spirit? Yeah, you gotta check it out.
There we go again, that's probably me again.
It is, it is me.
Alright, thank you.
There's that spirit I was talking about. I don't know what to do, Doug. Okay, they want to be heard though Matt. I'm not saying it's gonna solve anything.
It's, I think it's in the box here.
That one should help. We could move the table a little.
Okay, I don't, I won't have to talk if I call Crystal for first quarter communication report, Crystal?
Crystal Farnsworth, Communications Officer for the city. Um, so this report covers July to September two thousand seventeen. Do, do we have a, a visual on the monitors Kathy? I do want to point out that, um, I was gone for most of the month of September out of the office. Um, but, in comparison to, I pulled up statistics from last year, um, for the same quarter, and compared it to this year's totals. So, a hundred seventy-five hours this year, um, with a month missing, basically. And, last year at this time, um, there was an accrual of a hundred thirty-eight hours. So, we obviously have a lot higher demand for communications, and more time dedicated to that, that's happening. As far as department allocations, thank you Kathy, um, I do want to point out, for city council, there was quite a bit of time dedicated to that, uh, this quarter in promotion of Citizens Day, in helping promote and get that organized. And you can review the Facebook statistics at your leisure, but what I do want to point out is, I pulled some data, um, for peak reach this last quarter. And, uh, it was on September twenty-third, which we had about fifteen thousand people reached on that day. Which corresponded with that PSU students video that we put online, the Fall in Love with St. Helens video. Um, it was shared two hundred eighty-three times to date, online. And then, on the police department's Facebook page, their top performing day was on September fifth, with the reach of about ten thousand people. That day, we had the Distractive Driving House Bill update that we put online, which has fifty-two shares. In addition to a fatality motor vehicle accident that happened on Gable Road. I'll let you look at Twitter at your leisure too, but I do want to point out that, in this last quarter, um, the St. Helens Police Department had a Twitter account that was not being utilized, which we reactivated, linked to their PD app, and have been using to push information out through Twitter now. So they have their own dedicated account on Twitter. And, just under Activity Highlights, I'd like to point out, it's, it's always great when we can be featured or called out for, for something good that we're doing. And, uh, we had a couple of people tag us in some posts in comparison to police, the Portland Police and City of Woodland, um, saying, "Hey, look at what the city is doing on their social media, um, or, or in their departments, why can't we be doing that here?" And, just to recap, we had Fourth of July, that happened this last quarter, as well as Citizens Day in the park. And, one of my particular favorites was, I got to hang out with Gretchen one evening at the library after hours, and we had a library stuffed animal sleepover event. So, all the kids came for a storytime with their stuffed animals, and left them for the evening, and then their animals got into some mischief overnight at the library. And then they could pick them up in the morning, and I think we had, I mean Margaret can maybe add more, but we had a lot of really great feedback, um, from patrons that had been there. Or ones that saw the photo album we did on Facebook and said, "I don't know anything about this, I hope you do it next year." So, I think that is in the plan for next year. We had a, um, very dry quarter, hot and dry and no rain, so we had some emergency management heat related information that we had to push out this last quarter related to, um, cooling stations and being safe while it was hot, that we coordinated, um, countywide. As well as, I don't, I don't know what the trigger is, but we've had a lot of, um, people contacting me recently from, um, software companies wanting to do some communications demos for, um, archiving, for, um, media tracking. So I've been sitting through several of those, um, we're reviewing our archiving right now. Um, I need to get in touch with who we use now, as well as Archive Social has reached out to us, um, to do some comparisons, because we do need to add several of our accounts to what we're currently archiving. Obviously, Spirit of Halloween Town media contacts started last quarter. But I'll defer that to my next report, that will come in early January, when we review all of Spirit of Halloween Town information. We had the Gateway Ribbon Cutting, which garnered a lot of attention. And, um, kind of a, a plan post initial press release, working with ACC, um, to decide what we were going to promote and not promote. As well as working with Jenny, who I believe already applied for a grant, um, from the state-
Correct.
Yeah, for, um, a non-motorized upgrade to Great Cliffs Park. So we reached out through Facebook and Twitter to anybody who particularly was a kayaker in the area that used Great Cliffs to launch their kayak. Um, and we got a lot of great feedback, actually, um, got a couple of pictures a couple of times with people utilizing that to help supplement the grant that she went to present. And then the library, over the course of the full calendar year, is actually putting on four Civics for Adult workshops that we started to promote, the first of which they've already had, but there will be three more coming on a quarterly basis that we will be promoting. And then on the horizon, obviously, we're dead center in the middle of Spirit of Halloween Town events, which takes up the majority of any of my time in October. One thing I do want further guidance from city council on is, I wasn't in the last meeting, but I did briefly hear mention of a community survey going about, out regarding the Gazette, and I, I kinda want to get some more feedback from you on what you were thinking, as far as what that community survey looks like. I, I just want to point out, um, wherever we decide to host that survey at, you are going to tend to get, you know, if we do a Facebook poll, you're going to tend to already be reaching the people that want to see electronic information sent to them there. So, that information will be skewed towards them wanting to receive it electronically. If, if you have a paper survey, obviously, you're going to tend to get results skewed towards people who want to see paper versions of the Gazette. So, um, can I get a little more feedback from council or direction as to what you're thinking regarding a survey?
The only thing I, I was thinking is, we did want a survey, when, six, seven years ago?
A lot of years ago, yeah.
Yeah.
That covered all, I think, city services in general, yeah.
Right, but at that time, we were talking about that, about how, you know, Gazette's getting out there and how popular it is and all that. At that time, it was very popular, you know, I don't know what the survey was like, but anyway, so, that's, that's kind of where it came from. It's just, where are we at now, so that we can make, you know, decisions as to what we want to do with it, I guess.
Uh, do you want it specific to the Gazette, or do we want to work with other departments to incorporate a more broad-based survey?
Sure, it's always good to do surveys.
Okay, I-
See if there's improvement? We're looking to see if there's been improvement. Is that what we're doing?
Yeah, or, yeah, or if it's not as popular as it used to be, or is it better, or whatever, you know? I guess we could do all the services. So you'd ha, I think you'd have to take pieces from all those avenues, probably?
Yeah, I'd say less comprehensive. I think that statistics probably speak for the Gazette. How many we email out, how many we publish that are picked up.
I know I get people that come into City Hall looking for it. One day.
Is it on the website?
Yes.
Okay, one of the comments at the Library Board meeting last night was that it would be helpful if both the Gazette and the newsletter were embedded on the front page.
I've talked to Kathy about that, I believe they are trying to redesign-
Okay.
-those, um, search categories. So at that time, I talked to her about when, when that gets redesigned, putting a newsletter or communications section somewhere more prominent.
Well, the Library Board had lots of suggestions, would you like me to talk to you about them? Okay. I'll then, I won't report on, I'll just... If you're already making changes, we'll just talk.
So I'll follow up, I think, with John later about the survey.
So, nothing? Good work.
Couple other things. We do have the tree lighting and Christmas ships parade that is coming in early December, which also coincides with Donut Day, obviously. So as soon as Spirit of Halloween Town stuff gets over, we will probably be planning for our Christmas event. And I will also be, as I mentioned before, looking at archiving records retention in the next quarter for all of our social media accounts, since we've, you know, added Twitter, we have a new Instagram for Spirit of Halloween Town, we have all that stuff that we need to archive as well. I just talked to Gretchen at the library about doing a coordinated outreach to the community and what the timing would look like, because you will be voting on library fee changes, I believe at tonight's regular session. So we're already planning what the outreach looks like to the community if it passes, because it's more complex than it looks like, the fee changes that are happening at the library. So we want to really make sure that we effectively time what information is getting released when.
And Dick and Gretchen would done her proposal, those are the changes that we're talking about, right? The universal fee?
Yeah.
Yep, okay.
Yes. And then all I'll say is that I will also be working with the police department in the next month or so to do a couple week campaign that we won't release until, we won't talk about until it actually gets released, but it should be fun, help promote Donut Day. I look forward to that.
Who else is going to the police department trunk retreat? I know I'm going between 6:00 and 7:30. I'll be there.
Excuse me, are you going? Our booth? The city council booth?
I, I probably should, huh? That's what I thought I was asked to do.
Okay, I was gonna say, I was hoping that's what you're talking about and...
I'm going to be there, but library board and arts and cultural are both participating too, so I may drift away a little bit, but I'll be at our booth.
Well, I have everything for the booth, so.
Nice.
A couple of, well, they're the same game, but yeah, we're ready to go.
Just make sure we have lots of candy.
There's lots of candies.
And I'll be there taking pictures as well. Is it the state, state police?
Dressing up?
Who runs the photo campaign? Yeah. Or is that, yeah.
For you?
No?
And one other thing I want to highlight is particularly for those that might be watching online, we don't have any weather alerts for our area as of yet, but we do have the potential for over an inch of rain coming in the next 24 hours with another round of heavy rain and heavy winds predicted for Saturday. So we've put some information on the website under what's happening now, as well as on Facebook and Twitter. Sandbag stations are being set up right now and we're asking people to please clear leaves from storm drains to prevent ponding if you see it prior to the rain coming.
Yeah, it's called an atmosphere, weatherman called it.
And that's all I have, unless you have questions?
No, you've been very busy.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. That sounds good, we're gonna go ahead and take a minute break and we will resume here in two minutes. Hey, we are now back on the record, we had some technical difficulties, 1:48 PM, Wednesday, October 18th. First quarter financial report, Matt.
Good afternoon. In your council packet is the financial report for the first quarter of the fiscal year. I'm gonna jump to page two, which shows the general fund revenue as a whole and then you can see it on the bottom per category. Everything looks fine the first quarter, you can see, I did the numbers, we've collected about 28% of our budgeted revenue, so a little bit higher than projected, which is always good. But nothing too surprising or out of the ordinary. The categories are generally where I would expect them in the first quarter. Most of our property tax revenue, we don't receive till November, December, so the next quarter you'll see that likely jump up a huge amount when we receive that. I don't have anything specific on the general fund revenue unless the council has any questions? Hearing none, moving forward. Jumping ahead to the next couple pages are all the departments within the general fund. Most of the departments are within where I would expect them to be. The city council budget's about 42%, that's mainly because you guys go to a lot of conferences at the beginning of the year and so that's to be expected. Everything else is right around that 25, 30% mark. On the third page, the last one, the dream department, that is a growing list of my whiteboard and ideas from the city to work on. I'm gonna take off one though, because obviously we've got some work in the city council chambers to finish up, so I'm gonna take that one off the list. So it's just something for fun, so. Bring a little humor into the finance report. So, okay. The visitor and tourism fund, one thing I do want to note, there's two, I wouldn't say major things, but things that the council, I want to make you aware of. The, when we did the budget for the visitor and tourism fund, I did not anticipate a huge increase in the new contract for tourism services for E2C. So that amount is not budgeted in this current budget. So that means that the budget will over expend what it is budgeted for this year. We have only about $10,000 or so dollars sitting in contingency money, which is not enough to make up the difference that we will need to pay out. The remaining money is sitting in unappropriated funds, which legally I can't touch unless there's a natural disaster. So to mitigate that, what I will bring back in December and January after the audit's all done, I will bring back a resolution for an inter-fund loan, mainly probably from the general fund for a couple hundred thousand dollars or 150, kind of, I'll figure out what the exact amount is. And then the visitor and tourism fund will pay that back in July of this next fiscal year. So it'll be a quick inter-fund loan, just to cover our bases legally for the spending amounts. But I just want to let the council know that, know that I'm aware of that and we're gonna issue that probably December, January, when I come back after the audit is done, so.
And am I correct in thinking that part of the increase is due to having two employees, having an additional employee?
Correct, yeah, in the E2C contract was an increase in salary for the job that Tina does, as well as hiring an additional person for that staffing, so.
Okay.
So another thing, when we did the budget, was the wayfinding grant was not approved at that point. We had...
Correct.
Put in a number in anticipation, thinking maybe we'd get it, maybe we wouldn't and everything would probably work out, but we ended up getting the grant and then...
We had to match.
Yeah, so it was...
Yeah.
Yeah, it's good.
It's a good thing, but it's... It's a good thing, yes. Community development, community enhancement, they're right now pretty low on the totem pole polled as far as things going on. Obviously, community development is where we have, where we did budget 1.5 million in revenue for grants that we thought we may, may not receive. Ended up that we won't be receiving that, so that money won't be spent. So it's kind of, don't worry about it, because we're not gonna get it, kind of thing. The community enhancement grant is mainly the CCT for the police department and then some public arts and library projects that are going on. So not much going on there this first quarter. The street fund, looking pretty well. So no, no big things there. Are there any questions on these special revenue funds? Like I said, it's the first quarter, so there's not a whole lot to report on. So that's why I'm kind of just kind of going through it somewhat fast. Okay, we'll move on to the next page, which is the enterprise funds. One, this is the second of two things that I wanted to bring up in the water fund. When we put, when I put the budget together for this fiscal year, we changed our process of doing an indirect cost and a direct labor charge. We got rid of those and did what I call a general fund support services charge, if you'll remember. And that is where I basically charge indirect costs and direct labor to enterprise funds for people like the utility billing department, John's department, a lot of my department, all the departments that have something to do with water and sewer and everything. When I put the budget together for the water fund, this, the general fund support services charge was not put into the budget. So that's about 500 or so thousand dollars that was not budgeted in the water fund. So that will be another thing that I update in January and December with an inter-fund loan likely, or I could wait till next year and just do the transfer next year. Needless to say, it won't impact anything financially for the city, other than showing that in and out at a different time. So, but I just want to make the city council aware of that. As far as the water, sewer and storm, we've received, you know, pretty well budgeted as far as what we expected to see, we're about 25%. Store fund, storm fund is a little bit different than what we budgeted, because we split it out from the sewer fund in previous years, so the amounts from previous years and what it's looking at for budgeting was a little bit off, because it's now a separate department in itself, so. Nothing other than what I talked about in the water fund that was too surprising. Are there any questions about the water, sewer or storm funds? Hearing none, okay. So the next page is all of our internal service funds, that includes the equipment, IT, public works and facility major maintenance fund. All of these internal service funds, they get their revenue from charging other departments. So the equipment fund, we do, I do a huge spreadsheet of all the vehicles and what department they go into and then I charge that out. Same thing with the IT fund and then the public works operations fund and facility major maintenance fund. Nothing too surprising in there. The facility major maintenance fund is a little bit lagging behind, because some of the expenses for like the carpet and the paint and, you know, our blinds that we're gonna get here soon, those will be coming out in the next quarter, so you'll see a little bit more of a jump in that facility major maintenance expenses, just because we've been doing some maintenance, obviously, around city hall. But nothing too surprising in this first quarter. Any questions on the internal service funds? Next page is SDC funds. I mentioned when I put the budget together that I used the budgeted revenue amounts from previous years, because I hadn't really built anything to track system development charges. That's kind of what I've been doing this last quarter, is building something like that. And I'm gonna have you jump forward to the last page, which is the SDC and development overview. The graph on the very bottom is the single family resident permits. And I went back a few years, back to 2013, 14, when obviously it was a big issue with the economy and we had no building permits. And then you can see it jumped back up to about 21 in 14, 15 and you can kind of see it grow and then what we have this first quarter, which is nine. So that kind of gives you an idea, or at least a general frame of mind as far as the building areas. And we do have some larger developments coming on board here soon that are in the planning process, so we should see that number jump way up with some of those developments coming on board, so. But it'll at least give you every quarter an idea of what kind of building activity is going on. Okay?
Yep.
So like I said, it's the first quarter, there's not too much to report on, but I'm happy to answer any questions if there's anything specific.
Back on the SDCs and the permits issued, are those mostly residential or commercial?
It's mostly residence, there are some smaller building permits and a couple, I think, a few small commercial ones, but it's usually not a huge amount. Everything would be included in the top graph that you see. And then I single out the single family residents, because that's usually a pretty good category to single out, so you can kind of see what development's going on within the city. Any other questions? Okay, that's all I have.
Thanks, Matt. Hey, discuss splash pad, open dates. Keith? Is this yours?
I don't know.
I think it is, if I recall.
I opened it, yeah. So, Neil is not here, but he did comment the other day that he thought we probably should have a shut-off date. He didn't know about the start date, but he was willing to accept a shut-off date of the end of September.
Yeah, he was shocked that it wasn't off when I told him I was just down at the park and there was actually a kid.
I mean, personally, I still think we should have a startup date and it could be, it could be exceptions for it, as far as, you know, doesn't really matter, but... And then the other suggestion was that we put an emergency call number down there and hook up, that goes to like one of our telephones here. I think, can we do that, like have a answering machine that would answer a certain civic number and then they would take care of it on Monday or whatever the case would be if you got a call on the weekend or at their leisure? So it wouldn't necessarily go to a person? Is that possible? Well, a phone number, so they could call the number and then get a recording, like, you know?
Were you talking for the marina, the docks, Keith? Are you talking for the docks or just splash pad itself?
Splash pad.
Okay.
Yeah.
So for the splash pad, would we be posting the startup dates and the shut-off dates? So people will know when they go down there?
Absolutely.
Why are you doing this?
Because every spring and fall, I get people down there complaining that the water's running and nobody's around.
But you suggested in your last testimony that it was a worker, one of the city workers that was complaining.
It was several people, I said, a city worker did and then several other of the community have complained to me also.
I thought it was activated by pressing a pad, so that it wasn't running all the time.
It is, but it still is on a lot.
Why?
Because kids playing down there, whatever.
Yeah, the only thing I can say is what I witnessed last council meeting, was a kid down there, fully dressed, just pressing it to watch it come on, you know?
So it's fountain?
Yeah.
Well, I certainly went to the Michael Curry Fountain opening and they aren't shutting theirs off. And I mean, it's beautiful, there were kids running around in it and, but, you know... I just happened to ask Michael, who's, you know, if the council makes up their mind of when they want to turn that on and turn it off, he says, no way. And so that's up to the staff. And in some senses, I think that's what, I think that's what the designer, Michael Curry, wants as well, is for them to be flexible when that water is able to come on. And in Scalpoos, it's a mist, it's beautiful. It's like, it's very dramatic. And here, it's more playful and that kind of thing, but the kids play in that in raincoats. And so are we missing something there? I mean, kids like to play in water, no matter if, even if they have boots on. So if, I don't know if we're shooting ourselves in the foot by putting dates on when that water's turned off, or if we use the flexibility of our parks person and our public works person agreeing to, okay, now's the time to winterize that. We shut it off and winterize it, so nothing freezes up. And then, you know, after that danger is abetted, then we can, you know, open it, you know, they can open it when they want. And I think then, that then the council doesn't get called, because someone wants to use it and it's closed down because of some date that we picked out of, on the calendar randomly. And I just think that our public works staff and our parks people have a good head on their shoulders to figure that one out. And I think then, all of the complaints about it not being operable or being operable can go directly to them, they can make up their decision, rather than having someone have to come into the council and want the fountain on earlier or turned off later, whatever.
I, my concern would be that we get more phone calls if we don't have a date, because the public won't know when they're gonna go on and when they're gonna go off if it's... Because the public won't know when they're going to go on and when they're going to go off if it's just an arbitrary decision in the moment.
Uh, well, I just recall in our last discussion was, uh, a June first date to a September thirtieth date. And that, uh, Neil would make a call, which would be our staff, uh, kind of, kind of two, kind of what both you guys are saying. That if there was a, um, some weather that came, inclement weather that came that was hotter than normal, that he would turn it on.
Earlier.
Earlier and make the announcement through the city website.
Yeah, as long, as long as people are informed.
Kind of both of what you guys are saying. But I think, uh, apparently somebody just wants a date. I, I'm shocked to see this on the. But we, I guess we need to talk about this. Um, it doesn't seem over complicated. I'm okay with a date.
I'm okay with it. Anything that you want. It just doesn't seem like that big a deal. And I don't know why I'm sitting here trying to figure out.
Yeah.
What dates are going to work and what aren't. So it doesn't matter.
I just brought this up as a council report because I hear about it every summer. Because I walk through the park every day, sometimes twice a day during the summer, and these are the comments I get from the public.
Sure, sure.
Well, I think if it was posted down there, that would take care of it.
So Keith, we're willing to, uh, actually accept that, that date, it sounds like. Of, of June first to September thirtieth and leave it up to Neil, make the call and, uh. Keeping it, opening it earlier or keeping it on longer.
Works for me.
Okay.
Works for me.
All right. Okay, update on front office wiring and configuration, Matt.
So we had the carpet installed, um, a week or so ago. Um, and when we pulled up some of the carpet and trying to move stuff around with Roger on the cubicles. Um, around Crystal's office and in Bob's office, as well as in John's office. We ran into some issues of wiring, uh, when trying to put stuff back and figuring out what stuff was and where it went and. Some of it's just dead wiring that has never been taken out. Um, others are wiring that. Should be done a little bit better than it is. Um, so I was expecting to have a quote from Azimuth. Um, to redo some of the wiring in the front office. Um, it is something that I think, uh, should be done, but without the quote, I'm not sure. If it's an agenda item or not, if it's anything worthwhile, so, um, I guess I will, uh, either email you if it's. Drastic or something, or, um, I'll bring it back to the next council meeting.
I would hope it wouldn't be too drastic, not too hard to tie into the old ones.
Well, you know, it shouldn't be too hard to get a few mics to work in a council room too, so. But I did hear back from Eric and he, uh, is going to come out and, and work with us a little more on the council room to. Hopefully get it figured out.
That would be good.
Okay, you want to, you want to stay and, uh, discuss hiring of office assistant for front office?
Oh, wow, that kind of bleeds into this discussion. Um, so. We've talked, uh, I think a few times, uh, um, either internally. As well as at a council level about possibly hiring somebody, um, to take over some of the front office duties off of Heidi. Um, who is sitting at that front desk area. Um, I wanted to, um, give, get an idea from the city council. What your take is on hiring somebody. Um, because I think it is a need that staff. Would really appreciate, especially at that front office area. Um, now how do we pay for it? Um, if you remember a couple of meetings ago, we've already approved an additional police officer. Um, and so. I want to make sure and make clear that depending on how we set up the position is how we would pay for it. Um, right now in my head, I see that person technically being under the administration department, which is John's department. Um, right now, how you do your budgeting and financials is that eighty to eighty-five percent of the, that administration budget. Is paid for by the enterprise funds. Um, so however, an amount, I did some rough numbers. Um, if you were to hire a full-time person, roughly about sixty-seven thousand dollars or so with. Benefits and PERS and, and all that kind of stuff. Um, a full-time person would only cost. Technically the general fund, um, about ten to eleven thousand dollars. The remaining of that fifty-seven thousand dollars is split between water, sewer, storm, um, and sewer and everything. Um, so we charge out that, to those enterprise funds. Um. There are several potential job duties that I've discussed with Kathy and Lisa. Um, and Crystal and Heidi and John, um, to kind of get their feedback on what that kind of person would do. And is it a full-time position or is it a part-time position that maybe works it, its way into a full-time? Um, so I wanted to kind of just get the feedback of the council of, is this something that you would like to see added? Either within a couple of months or whether it's we working into the budget for next year. Um, but I just wanted to get your feedback on what you see as a need in the front office and what you would be agreeable to. As far as us moving forward potentially with, with hiring someone in some fashion.
I think our front office would be able to operate more effectively and efficiently with another person. I think that there are enough duties to, to occupy a full-time person and. Make it possible for some of the other people in the front office to actually do their duties.
Okay.
Well, while, while we're on this, I got to give kudos to Heidi because in the last, uh, uh, in the last year or so. She's, uh, overwhelmed with stacks of paper and you can barely find her with. All this paper and all these things that she's doing. And she's always busy. She's always, but she. She takes time to give eye contact to the cus, to the customer, anyone who walks through there. Tries to solve the problem in a very positive way. Yes, we can, uh, we can help you. We can do this. We can, you have to see this person or this person or, and she doesn't, she doesn't let any of our citizens go back out the door frustrated. And so I, just huge kudos to her for, for doing that, for multitasking. Uh, that's multitasking at its best, I think. And so.
I'm going to have to agree with Doug on that for sure and, um, that's why I would propose maybe a part-time for right now. Because I'd still like to keep her up there part of the time because she is so friendly and does help out so much. I know, I know it could be work into a full-time. Um, that's what I would recommend. But, uh, that I'd be open for a part-time right now, which would give us.
Yeah, and to, to not jump ahead or anything, but when, when we tore out the carpet and we have everything out, you know, we're kind of thinking about, well. You know, what's, what's this going to look like in the next ten years or so when we, you know, prob, probably do hire somebody and re-figure thing? We also have the, um, the part-time building person, uh, that's going to be coming on board sometime soon, um, potentially, so.
Possibly share?
Well, that's, the workspace is kind of the question. Um, and we have an extra office in there that is mainly used for storage and stuff. That's the one next to Bob's. Um, what I would like to maybe come back to you with some ideas on. Is maybe adding a little bit more of a cubicle space like Crystal has to that front office. And Heidi would actually move over to the corner. Um, so she still has a front office presence, um, to help people as well. Um, but would move Heidi over to the corner, uh, and then the new building person would be technically where Crystal is. Um, and then Crystal would actually move potentially into the office. Um, but that's still very preliminary and I'd like to, you know, obviously make sure staff is okay with that and get some ideas. And what it would cost for adding some cu, some more cubicle space and storage space up there, which is what's really needed for the building department.
That front office is the first interface we have with the public and I think it's really important that we are fully staffed up there so that people. Don't have to stand in line, don't have to wait and get their questions answered.
Correct, yeah.
Why I think full-time position is warranted.
Yeah, and that, the front counter area can get pretty filled up fast. Um, it's not a very, as far as inviting or having somebody wait there for somebody to come down or something. Um, it doesn't take more than two or three people to fill that space up. Um, so that would be something that we could address and look at. Um, as far as moving the counters back just a little bit or, um, so there's a lot of ideas that we can talk about. Um, it's very preliminary, but I at least wanted to get the council's feedback on, is this something you would like? Staff to kind of work on and come back to you with an actual cost estimate and where it would be funded and what job duties and all that kind of stuff.
I see Crystal would be more effective if she were moved from that area too.
Correct, yeah.
Because she's interrupted constantly and it's hard to follow your stream of thought and.
Yeah, she liked the idea of having a door to close or something like that, just because she obviously has taken up a lot of time with communications. And press releases and everything, so.
You lose your train of thought and it's hard to get back.
Yeah, exactly.
So I guess my, my only reason for saying part-time Susan was, uh, just because of the fact that we are, the building department will start. Traditionally slowing down just a little bit, that Heidi, um, now give her the ability to take, uh, two and a half days if it was part-time or whatever. And be able to do her work. And then we're not sure that we're going to get a completely right fit. We've been lucky. Very, very lucky, all the way through, through Lisa to, you know, on down the line. That we get that, those type of people for the front and it's fortunate, I think.
Well, I think it's important that we're very careful in hiring.
Yes, yep, yep, yep.
Yeah, and either hiring externally, the other option you could look at is going through a temp agency. Um, temp agencies are a great opportunity for you to try out an employee, to see how they work. Um, and then offer them a, a regular part-time, full-time position. Um, John brought that up about going through a temp agency possibly to.
I like that idea.
And I'd like to see the staff recommendations on how people could be utilized.
But I think it's definitely crucially needed right now, a part-time bar none. I think Doug, like Doug said, Heidi's engulfed in paperwork. Keith?
Uh, I think I'd maybe vote for the full-time position myself.
Okay.
So I will come back then in at one of the November meetings, uh, with a more general framework plan, um, and ideas. And get your thoughts on moving forward.
Yep, sounds good, Matt. Thank you. Okay, um, department reports. Terry?
The, uh, search for police officers continues. Uh, we had an application process that closed on Friday. Kathy tells me we're waiting for some test results to come back tomorrow. And then once we get those test results back, we will, uh, schedule. Interviews. So by the time we meet again in a couple of weeks, might have something to talk about.
Terry, what is it, uh, if I wanted to come sit in on, uh, the interview process, is that okay?
Well, we have a panel, uh, and we've usually have supervisors, one member of the council and a community member, um, that takes part in that.
Okay. Um, I'll, I'll, I'll talk to you. Okay. I just wanted to see, I know it's extensive. I know they're, and that's why, I know you guys get a lot of guys lined up for that day too and. I even promised I'd wear suit.
I don't know, um.
Because you guys are all.
How many, Kathy, do you know how many applications we have?
Twenty-four applications. Wow.
Are we redoing the questions for this round?
When we talked about that, um, we had a meeting yesterday and talked about. That very thing. Um, so, yes.
So it's being discussed. Cool.
Twenty-four is not that great. Twenty-four is actually, uh.
Oh, really? Yeah, uh, what, what's the, what's the most you've had on the docket? Is it a couple of day? That sounds like a hundred, sounds more than a couple of day process.
Well, we've never interviewed a hundred, but my point is, uh, we've had a hundred applications. Twenty-four is, um, I would say typical that we've been getting lately. It's, yeah, I'm talking to chiefs all over the state and they're telling me the same thing. Uh, people are not applying for law enforcement jobs. You would think, uh, for example, the city of Bend, talked to their chief the other day, they've had eight openings for three years.
Wow.
And they're having a hard time. You know, they'll pick up one and lose two, and then they'll pick up three and they'll lose two more and they'll pick up four and lose three and it's, uh.
Kind of like us.
Just to show you, even though the attraction of the cities there, that the force, because Bend is one of the top growing cities in.
Well, that's what I mean, is, is, uh.
True all over.
If you were going through the same thing, Ben's going through it, Portland's going through it, Hillsboro, they're all going through it. Everybody's going through the same thing. So as Keith and I have been talking over and over and over again about, uh, how do we? How do we make St. Helens appeal to the applicant? Uh, and that's a tough one because Ben. Can't even make the applicant appeal. Uh, so it's, it's, uh.
Yeah.
Uh, and I'm not comparing us to Ben in Central Oregon, but Central Oregon is a pretty desirable place to be. And you'd think that Ben would have them lined up out the door to get in, and they don't. So. Anyway, twenty-four is, uh, uh, it's typical, but with what we've been going through the last couple of years. But it's not that impressive of a number. Uh, and, uh. You know, we struggle. It, it's, um, the minimum qualifications are pretty simple. Most of us can meet the minimums. But the question is, are they really going to be St. Helens police officers? The mere fact you have a driver's license, you're twenty-one years of age and you have a GED. That's all you need. That's the basic qualifications, but, um. We've set the bar pretty high internally and, uh, so out of twenty-four, it may be tough to find two people. But we'll do our very best.
Well, your guys' extensive interview process shows in the department, so clearly noted and seen.
We just had this conversation yesterday as we talked about the interview and the questions and there was a lot of, uh, feedback from the panel last time. Susan was on that panel and we talked about the questions. Um, and as I would completely agree. That there's always room for improvement and if we need to change some things, we will, uh, with the, the panel and how we do it. But, uh, that same process is the process that got us where we are today with the people that we have today. And I firmly believe that we have the best group of guys and gals working for us right now than we've had. In a long, long time, uh, if ever. I, I, I really, really appreciate the staff that we have. And we got them through the current process. So, uh, I know we, there's some things we need, we can tweak and adjust. But I go, you know, it's worked out really well for us, really well. But we're going to, we're going to take a look at it and we'll, uh, we'll make some adjustments. That's for sure.
Yeah, I just think there are a few questions that could maybe be updated.
Then there's nothing about, we're, we're going to, we're going to, um, we're going to adjust, um, between now and the process. Which Kathy and I will work together next week to, uh, line up some dates and, uh, we'll go from there.
I agree, it's a good process.
I was, I was really impressed with, uh, the, the way you guys, uh, um, the whole team. Remind me of the name of the team that was on downtown Saturday.
Instant Command Team?
Yes. I was very impressed with how you guys, uh, were ready to go and you discussed all scenarios and. Everybody had their radios and I was even more, more impressed with the way the guys handled the protesters. And got them out of here without a lot of people knowing. Um, but they did make a little bit of an impact on, on the, what was going on down here. I noticed a few people left, so, but I was impressed with the way our guys handled it.
I, yeah, I, I would agree. I thought the guys that addressed that, um, were pretty masterful in the way they. De-escalated that, that could have been something that, um.
Yes.
These guys would have wanted to. It didn't work out that way.
No, it didn't.
They get a lot of credit, I think. Um, they should get all the credit for making sure that that didn't turn into something else, so.
Yep. So kudos to, to the guys. Margaret?
Huh?
We have one too.
It's a figure of speech, sorry. Guys and gals. Margaret?
Yes. Well, um, it's a busy season at the library. Tomorrow night, the. The brand new book club kicks off. Um, I've mentioned that that's, um, initiated by our library board. We have two library board members that are going to head that up with, um, assistance from one of our staff members. And they'll be reading books with a Halloween twist. We have other Halloween-related activities happening. Um, our youth librarian has a special Halloween storytime planned on October twenty-fifth. And there's pumpkin painting on Friday, October twenty-seventh for, um, children and teens. Um, our writing community is really active at the library this past weekend. Um, one of our staff. one of our staff members, who is also a freelance writer, uh, held a indie author event. And, uh, this is our first year to do this and fourteen people came for, um, Saturday afternoon. So I felt like for our first effort, it was successful. It was a workshop-type setting where, um, different resources are made available to writers who are, um, just starting out as independent authors. And that's kind of a nice lead-in to November, which is National Novel Writing Month. And this time, um, we have a new association. Well, it's not entirely new, but, uh, new from past years. Uh, we have author Tina Connolly coming. Um, Tina used to work at the St. Helens bookstore. And she's a Portland-based, uh, science fiction author and she's been a finalist for some rather significant science fiction awards, the Nebula, the Norton, and the World Fantasy Awards. So she is a very, um, congenial person, uh, quite humorous, and so she'll be, uh, leading, um, our local authors in a, a night of, of getting energized about tackling, um, the writing process during the month of November. This Saturday, the Friends of the Library, well, I should say this Friday and Saturday, the Friends of the Library are gonna have their fall book sale. Um, this is when they bring out all the book donations that have been stored away that we didn't have room for in the hallway. It's a two-day event. They'll be selling books from 10 to 5, uh, on Friday and from 10 to 2 on Saturday. And the St. Helens Garden Club joins them on Saturday from 9 until 2, um, selling, uh, they're having their annual, um, fall plant sale on the front porch. Crystal mentioned it's gonna be rainy and blustery. I hope, um, it isn't a deterrent to them or the people that are coming to buy plants and books because it's always a real successful event for both of them. Last year, our Friends of the Library had an extraordinarily successful sale. Um, they put signs out and drew in a lot of people that were here for the Halloween Town festivities. And that's, that's, those are the highlights. That's all I have.
Thanks, Margaret. Matt?
Uh, just a couple of things to, um, let you know about the, back a few months ago when we talked about all the SDC changes. Steve Donovan brought up about some of the utility accounts that are not charged the storm fees.
Yes.
Uh, there's about 300 or so accounts. Uh, I'm still working with Sue on figuring out what those are, um, and how much, how many EDUs they are and kind of what that poss- that possibility is. So I just want to let you know, we are still working on it. Um, we have to go property by property, so.
You gotta measure square footage, right?
Yeah, yeah, and that's on Sue and her GIS system, so along with everything else she's doing in her world, uh, she's taking that on as well. So as soon as she gets done with that, um, and doing her process, then we'll be coming back to you, um, to talk about it, uh, so with some more information. I guess I just need a general consensus on getting a, another copier for the utility billing office. Um, they have a desktop printer, uh, that they've been using for probably a while. Um, and when I, when we got the court department a replacement, um, which is kind of a smaller unit copier, um, they really liked it and would love to have one over in their office, uh, that way they can stop using the desktop one. So I just wanted a general consensus that you guys were okay.
We're basically doubling the need there if we're gonna be doing monthly billing, right?
We are, yes. Yep.
So I don't think a desktop is sufficient.
No, it's not. Yeah. So, no problems with that, I assume? Okay.
How much money does that run? Not much anyhow, are they?
We're, I'm hoping to do it on the same contract that Sue got for her printer upstairs, which is-
We'll be leasing it?
I'm sorry?
We'll be leasing it?
Yes. Which is like, uh, I think, it's like a, it's a flat, it's a flat fee amount monthly, right?
Have your copies included in your agreement.
That's true for engineering, but will that be true for utility billing too, do you think, as far as the number of copies they make? They probably make more copies.
Probably.
I would think so, but that's probably worth looking into some more to figure out.
Mm-hmm. It's the same copiers upstairs and it's only $99 a monthly, which is really-
Oh, yeah. That's them servicing it, the ink, all that, everything. Yeah, that's not bad, though.
Yeah, so. On the subject of utility billing, uh, monthly billing. So I'm not sure if, if you guys know, uh, one of our utility billing specialists is pregnant, um, and do, in December-ish time, um, which is right when we were going to do originally monthly billing. I've talked to a few other cities that have gone through a conversion from bimonthly to monthly billing in, in Springbrook, and I've been told it's not a fun process. So I'm anticipating having some issues. Uh, I'm also anticipating customer issues as far as payments. Uh, one thing to think about, if we were to do it in December, um, basically you're gonna receive a bimonthly bill and then the next month you're gonna receive the single bill. So you're basically gonna have three months of bills due in a very short time period.
Yeah, I don't think December and January is a good time for that.
Correct. I didn't want to really give that as a Christmas present to residents of St. Helens. Um, so I've, I think it kind of works out better if I do it in April where it's kind of that tax refund season, so to speak, um, where they may be able to get back on schedule with, uh, with seeing those monthly payments. Um, now, obviously there will be, you know, adjustments to late fees and, and shut-offs and all that kind of stuff when we move through their transition. Um, but I wanted to get the council's feedback is if you are okay if I do push it out, um, to April when I have a full staff back, um, as well as the, the timing with the Christmas and everything.
I have a question. Is everybody set to go at the same time every, every other month is when you bill?
That's part of the discussion that we're gonna have with staff, um, to get their feedback. There are some cities that do kind of quadrants in the city.
That's why it's curious, because we do that.
We can. There's also some cities that just do it all, one month.
Is that how we are doing it currently?
Correct, yeah, we do. We have, we have heavy users and businesses that are already on monthly. And then we have a lot of, most of our residents that are on bimonthly. So it, it plays into some of the public work staff as well in their department as far as staffing. Now, most of, most of our meters are now electronic read meters. Um, but there are still some, a lot of times after we do readings that we send out public work staff to just double-check because it's a high reading or very low or anything like that. And then doing shut-offs.
Yes.
You know, every week or so can, so there are pros and cons to both sides. Um, and I haven't had a conversation directly with staff about what their thoughts are, um, and to get their feedback. Um, so I wouldn't say I'm prepared to answer that question right now. Um, but that is something that we can look in. Um, if I get a feel from the council, do you want to look at a more quadrant-based or section-based utility billing system? Or do you prefer, or do you care? Um, I guess if it's once a month and it's due the 10th of every month, then that's for everyone.
I would think that that would be a staff decision in terms of efficiency of how you best, uh, uh, integrate your, uh, working with one another, with the, with the crews and with the staff here and just how efficient, from a staff point, that, uh, one way, uh, weighs heavier than another.
I, correct.
I'm always interested in seeing something be effective and efficient, so whatever works best.
And like I said, there, there are pros and cons to, to each one, so, um, I will definitely have a conversation with staff.
You guys have a better grasp on that.
Maybe, maybe a better ebb and flow would be half of, on the first and half on the 15th, even on a monthly basis. So you got that constant flow of money coming in and keeping that staff busy.
Yep.
Instead of just, uh, the 10th, that week.
Yep.
Yes, and then they're standing around twiddling their thumbs.
Oh, they're not twiddling their thumbs, I guarantee you that. But I understand what you're saying.
Yes.
I understand what you're saying.
Appreciate you considering that.
Yeah, so, um, just two more quick things. So Keith heard about this at our tech meeting that we had the other day. Um, our software company, Exella, has been bought out again. So if you remember, Springbrook, uh, was originally in Portland. St. Helens has been with Springbrook since the beginning of time almost. Then Exella bought Springbrook. Uh, they are a California-based company. Um, and now there has been another investment firm taking somewhat over of Exella. So myself and a few other members in the finance community are a little concerned about having additional issues compared, in addition to what the issues we have now. As far as software options, it's not a fun conversation to have, obviously, because it's a decent amount of money to go out for a new software program. And they can range anywhere from, you know, 50 grand to 300 grand. Uh, just kind of depends on what your choices are. Um, but what I would like to do, at least in the interim of at least possibly looking at an alternative, is to have at least a couple of software companies that I know of that are current in my organization as far as finance officers, to come in and just give a presentation or sample of their software, just so staff can see what is out there. Not saying that I'm looking to switch anytime or next year or five years from now. Um, but it, I think it may give staff an idea of what else is out there. Um, and if it is plausible to even look at a different software company, uh, depending on the price and affordability and all that kind of stuff. Um, so I wanted to kind of get the council's feedback of if you are okay with me setting up those initial discussions and having just a basic presentation, um, and to get an idea. And then after talking with staff, we can probably come to a decision to either stay with Springbrook for a while or, or decide to, yeah, we do want to look elsewhere at other products. Um, does the council have any preference, um, or thoughts on that?
We want it to work.
Yeah, I would too. Um, okay, so the last thing, um, just want to briefly mention, um, normally I would do the court report today. Uh, Cindy Phillips wasn't able to attend, um, because I think she's doing Columbia City Court today. Uh, so we're gonna have that on November 1st. Um, but I meant to talk about it just briefly in, uh, my financial report. Um, we've seen a vast turnaround, um, in the court department, just as far as culture. Um, we have a lot of customers that are happy to come to court and happy when they leave, which is odd to say. And we've seen a, a very high tick in, um, revenues for the court department collecting on a lot of the old cases that have been sitting on or sitting out there for a number of years, as well as the current ones that we have collecting. So, um, I just wanted to give a general framework before I give you the full report on November 1st, uh, in which Clayton and Cindy will be here, uh, to answer questions and talk about some of the change that they've made. But, uh, just want to give you a little snapshot of what's to come. Um, I see a lot of bright changes over there, um, and I'll be happy to report that.
I'll be interested in seeing what the changes are.
Yep.
And how they play out.
Yep. Uh, that's all I have.
Okay, thanks, Matt. Kathy?
You guys are scheduled for your council retreat on November 8th from 4 to 8. Uh, that's dinnertime. What would you like to have ordered for dinner?
Not pizza. We always have pizza.
You just tell me what you want and if you have a preference, then let me know.
Okay. Can we think about it and get back to you?
Sure.
Okay.
We still have time. That's all I have.
Beans?
Thanks, Kathy.
I like beans.
John?
Don't want your menu preferences on TV.
No. No.
Uh, along with that, the, the retreat, uh, if you have agenda items that you want me to put into a formal agenda, just get them to me and I'll, I'll put them together. So to talk a little bit more about the, the Halloween and kind of build on, Mayor Shoal gave a real accolades and a nice shout-out off the, the steps there to the, the city administrator for all his work with Halloween. I was thinking, in my mindset, standing in the audience was, and all of the other people that have made this happen. There was, you know, Halloween doesn't happen by itself. There is just a whole lot of effort that goes into it and it just, it wouldn't happen without the, the support of the, the staff and the, uh, all the volunteer groups and, you know, public works and, and the public safety and public safety extended to the whole region, really. And, uh, I, I think it's been a really good thing. If you kind of just do some reflection on how much it's grown since the, uh, I was thinking pre-Marnias being the, the PM of, you know, it was a pretty small and local event and draw a few hundred people and how we had this conversation of, do you want it to see it bigger and we'll take some chances and risk and bring in some of this talent and see how it works out. A few years ago, we did that, we took that risk and, uh, I think it's paid dividends. And it's done a lot for, you know, our, you know, St. Helens community identity, that, that brand is kind of just building, you know, we're just becoming Halloween. That's what we're known for across. Crystal didn't share her, her report there, some of the analytics about, uh, impressions and, you know, one of the reports shows one point, almost three million impressions just on, you know, that, this past weekend, as, as far as the event. And that's, that's a lot of people to impress. St. Helens off, not just the state, you know, it's around the, the country and world, like we're, we know. You know, economic development, you know, the vendors have all done well and local businesses have done well. They've kind of, rather than us coming to them, we, you know, we've done that, made that effort to try to, to reach out and run the shuttle around in circles to services of the businesses or get people up in front of them. But they're recognizing that coming down to the, the source is, is worth their, worth their while, to the extent they can do it. Some of the small businesses have a challenge with their staffing and things, but. So it kind of begs the question of how big do we want to go, you know, if, we've made it big. I think it's at a spot that's semi-manageable. Um, I think these connections with overseas relationships with the Fujifilm thing that you're talking about could be a, you know, it could be a real destination and, you know, we don't want to overrun the town either and, and what we, it's, the city of Bend is going through this, uh, identity crisis too about being, having, what does too much tourism look like? And, you know, they've become almost, there's a certain amount of people that feel like it's, it's too much. You know, is there a real back, is there a sweet spot in there where there's too much or not, not enough? It's economically sustainable, we've, you know.
And we need the infrastructure too.
Just some, some things to think about, there's no question. I think there, don't think there's any answers required right now.
Wouldn't, wouldn't Bend be more of a, um, like, it seems like it's got the two seasons and it, this is a month that we're talking about.
Oh, for issue.
They've, they've got the two seasons.
This is a very, seems to be a relevant issue. We've built this around and, uh, you know, we have some work to do as far as the unity piece of building, getting other, getting all the oars going in the same direction so that we're working together. And I think it could be even better in that regard, but. Anyway, just some thoughts to ponder there. I've been invited to sit on a panel for economic development for a CCT, uh, which is the Columbia County Economic Team Breakfast on the 24th, along with the, the senator and some others to talk about, uh, you know, the things we've done or, and are doing towards, towards improving livability and economic development and, pleased to be a part of that. Next week, we have some people from EPA coming to kick off of our, our, a couple of our grants we've got going. Let's see, what else do I have on the list here? Uh, the Oregon Leadership Summit is something that, uh, some of us go to every year in December. It's a mix of, um, business and public agencies.
I want to go to that again.
Me too.
Yeah.
Anybody's interested in that, it's typically at the, the Moda Center there. Let me know or I can send out the invite if you're not on the, not getting the emails.
I already sent you a request.
When is that? What date?
I don't, I don't.
Um.
Usually the first week of December. And I guess, uh, lastly, I've been invited to-
It's on the 4th, just a Monday.
Thank you.
That's a good guess.
Good guess.
Sorry about that. Our, our conversations with the, uh, about transient boaters.
Yes, tomorrow.
Yeah, Portland has a, a task force, transient boater task force, which has representatives from Department of State Lands, Oregon State Marine Board, Columbia River Yachting Association. They reached out to, to me to see if I would come and give testimony to that, that group.
Good.
That's tomorrow at 10 o'clock in Portland City Hall, so I'll be down there.
Kathy.
Telling our story, so.
You want me to show up too and, uh, tell them to quit sending, uh, people out on bus with vouchers out of their way?
No.
Or should I just stay home?
That was your prerogative.
That's partially-
You have enough cheers for the year out there in the Halloween Town, so now you can get some booze from Portland crowd, right?
That's right. No, just a, a little bit of an observation. That's right. No, just a little bit of an observation. I know Tent City USA was this brought up and how it's being addressed, and they're making progress. Well, when we have clear testimony of people that made it out here from Portland, that were offered tickets, it's a little frustrating.
They're offered tickets to where they came from. And sometimes it's here, and sometimes it's elsewhere.
Well, if you get that and a gift card, and you're only thirty miles away from Portland, and you got a free opportunity for a bus ride and a gift card.
But it's not exclusive to St. Helens.
And you have nothing to lose, because you're in that position already, Susan. It's very easy.
It's not exclusive to St. Helens, Rick.
Oh, I know. I know that. Trust me, it was brought up in our mayor discussion at the League of Oregon Cities. We as mayors were discussing that. And I was really, I really shocked at how-
I think it's discussed far more broadly than that.
Sorry to interrupt, but I was really shocked at how many mayors were still under the impression that majority of homeless were drug addicted or mentally ill, and that's not the case. It's a small percentage. It's less than half. We took the seminar at Margaret's, at Margaret's, the library that time. And that is, that is exactly what they stated the facts as being.
Fifty percent is half, it's not a small number.
No, less than, less than fifty percent. I think it's like a thirty percentile or actually. The, I have to get the facts, but I remember it was very shocking to me, and how many kids and people at work are still homeless, so.
Well, there's an economic impact, too, people who don't have.
Sorry I got sideways, John. It's your report.
One of the things from Crystal's report earlier about communications is, you know, a lot of cities really don't invest in communications. And I think the evidence is just overly compelling about how important it is and, you know, whether it's through the police department, or the library, or all the city departments. And Halloween would not be successful, it wouldn't be what it is without the council's decision to invest in communications. That's it.
I think it's a good investment personally. I don't know about anybody else who'd like to speak on that. But I just think it's, I mean, what it does for the whole community, and not only that, the county as well. I mean, it ripples well beyond just our city.
This city is not the same. I don't know if Keith can explain his experience or not, but when I came on council ten years, ten-plus years ago, it's not the same. It's totally changed. The atmosphere in the council, the atmosphere in City Hall, has radiated, I think, out into the community.
In a good way.
In a very good way, I think. There's a, I think we have a tremendous amount of involvement, and I wanted to build a little on that in my, on my report. But, no, I think you're absolutely correct. It's like, it's, it's, it's very healthy to have civic pride. And that's what, that's what this reflection is all about. It also, it also helps our small businesses. It also helps a lot of things, like in John's report, like he reflected on.
Did John get to finish his report?
I did.
Yeah, that's why I jumped in. That's why I jumped in.
Wasn't sure.
No, I just cut him off all the time.
We do tend to get a little casual.
Okay, councilor's report. So let's start with Councilor Locke.
Lots of stuff going on over on the Boise property. They remodeled the offices over there and cleaned out the buildings. They're sealing them up, whatnot, getting some stuff going. We're, we're also doing some work on to just kind of tidying up their, their site over there, and things are coming along. So we're, and we're actually starting to get a little headway on Cascades helping us out a little bit. So things have improved a little bit.
Do they have an estimated time of when they will start to actually start their grow operation?
Yeah, it kind of depends on the OLCC licenses, how, how long that takes. It could take anywhere from two to four, five, six months, possibly.
But they're all set up?
Well, they're, they will be in a couple of months, yes. They'll be all set up. They're, they're ready for the OLCC. It will be in two months anyway, but so.
So that's something we need to talk about also, is they're looking for some support on what's called an over-tier license. And basically, it gives them the ability to go with a bigger building and less of a footprint on their nine-point-five. It could be broken into like four instead of like twenty different parcels, if that were to happen. Another thing they were discussing was the U agricultural that they're trying to get, which limits them from going to, the, the way, if it went to the old way, it would be like a fifty-eight-hundred square foot building, and they want to be able to go to a twelve-thousand square foot, twelve-thousand square foot building. But with that over-tier, it's even larger than that. But the U agricultural was another thing that they were, these are all questions that we, you know, would, would help them as far as being able to be a better, better well-suited in business management, and it would help us out as a city as far as employees, for them to be able to hire more employees, I think, in a bigger, bigger scale than a smaller scale.
So is this a zoning issue?
Yeah. Yeah, zoning issue. So they're going to be reaching out to us on that.
Future agenda item.
Well, actually, actually, it could be-
Probably a planning commission.
Yeah, it probably could be sooner than later that we might be asked to support.
Yeah.
Okay, just so everybody knows. And how does everybody feel about that? I mean, personally, I think it's good for, if it's a bigger company, they're going to hire like an industrial-type, you know, workforce. If it's broken into those small little areas, they each have to have their own individual business tax permit.
I think I'd like to see a presentation on that.
Yeah, I think a good presentation and a deliberation on it, on it, on our next council meeting or whatever would be great.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I want to know what the comparisons are.
Yeah, I just know that, I mean, I know Councilor Locke's in the loop on this too as well. It does need to be just-
Tell you all about it.
Yes, yes. And, but you didn't, so that's why, that's why I brought it up. That's why I brought it up. No, it actually probably may, may need to happen sooner than later. That's why I was bringing it, that's why I was bringing it up to the entire council. And, you know.
As long as I get all of the information.
And it's not that, you know, they're looking to try to cut any corners. They're just trying to do it. That's why they're wanting this out in the open. They're not trying to. They want to be completely forthcoming.
I wasn't implying that they were. I just, I don't have the information yet.
Yep, yep. So I just wanted to make it council aware of it, that it could be coming to our attention real soon. Okay? Sorry to interrupt you, Keith.
No, it's all right.
Go ahead.
So, I've got a couple of things, but I think I'll talk about those in executive session. Because they're kind of-
You sure you don't want to talk about them here?
No.
Okay. All right. Councilor Khan?
Okay, I made a difficult decision over the last couple of weeks, and I am stepping down as the liaison between the city council and Shedco. I've been doing it for something like six or seven years. My goal has been to be a communication link and promote collaboration. Since it's not a city committee, I don't think a liaison is mandated. And I think it's time for us to look at a new strategy for partnering and collaborating. And so I would, I'm on a lot of other committees. I'm also a past board member of Shedco. I'm a current board member of Keep It Local. I've been asked to be on a county tourism committee under Travel Oregon, and so I think, I'm staying in touch still. I just want to let go of that one position, make room for others.
Good decision.
Yeah, I, and I think we could talk about, maybe at our retreat, we could talk a little bit more about.
How to restructure it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Or if it's really, you know, look at it, maybe really needed, you know, I can see where they're important, but it's not a city, like you said. So we need to really look at that. So that's kind of discussing that, because that's, I appreciate all you are out there doing.
Thank you. Thank you. Next week, the library is going to be trying to make some changes that will give us better data. We're putting new patron counters on the doors, so the count will be more accurate. We're looking at updating some of the safety improvements. We also need more volunteers at the library to shelve, and maybe for special projects, they will have to pass a background check. And we really would like to clone Crystal and have one of her, our very own. The library and Arts and Cultural, as I said earlier, both participating in the police department's Safe Trunk or Treat event on Halloween. So hope everybody turns out for it. I know you and I are.
Yep. All right, Council President Morton?
I'm looking forward to the retreat. And of course, we, we don't make decisions at that, you know, when we get together like that. But we do discuss our visions and what's in front of us. And we get to know each other's thoughts and concerns about direction of the city. And, and I appreciate that, and I think it's a lot of things that we've kind of hit on here with our reports and talk about a bit. But I'm looking forward to really sitting down and, and having a, a good conference at that, at that time. Wow, kudos to a lot of people, a lot of our staff, and of course, the community for pulling off the Halloween town events. I know our public, I've met with some of our Public Works guys that had, one had, was just turning in a fourteen-hour day. And for those guys out doing what they're doing, that's a lot of heavy lifting all day long. That's a long time to be laboring. It is just a long haul grind. And guess what? The guy had a smile on his face. And that's, that was the neat thing, you know? He just goes, yeah, whatever. And I think as part of my report is, I went over to Sand Island after the yacht clubs had their little crews in over there. And I just wanted to go see what the, what the condition of the island was like after they left. So I went over there on Sunday afternoon and took a look around. I talked to Keith about this. I couldn't find a gum wrapper. I couldn't find anything. Walked pretty much the entire island. It was like a golf course. It was amazing. And no trash anywhere. And there's a little sign that says, as we get off, and that sign was skewed. And that bothers me, because here's this beautiful area that they, people, our, our visitors have kept up. And we need to make certain, I was going to get, get that to Neil and to our parks people, to get those signs back up so that they're presentable, so that they can read. They're well-read. They're well-designed. And then there's one sign that needs help. I mean, a tree fell into it like two years ago or whatever, and it still has a big dent into it, and it says, City of St. Helens Park. You know the one. And if we can get those things shored up, and along with that, our community and our guests are taking pride in their environment that they're visiting. And simply, since we removed the trash cans from there, they got the message that they need to take their trash out. And there's just a little sign that says, please take your trash out. Please carry your trash out. And along with that, I'm thinking, okay, they've got the pride. And I kind of like, and I'd kind of like to see the staff here come up with some kind of slogan, that this is a community of pride. Now, we're trying to build pride in this community. And picking up your garb, picking up the garbage is the first step. It's a tipping point in building pride. And I think that that's very important. And so I talked to John about that. I had a discussion with him. I says, is there any way that we can get, and I look over at Keith's shirt, City of St. Helens, and he wears that very proudly. I have one as well.
I don't. I'd like one.
Might even have it on. I'm not certain. They're cool. There you go, polo shirts. The City of St. Helens. I'm looking for something that has a community, the community with pride underneath that. Some kind of slogan that starts to build the direction of where we want to go and, and the, the community that we want to continue to, to build on. I hope that makes sense. That some of those things, some of those slogans can be very trite, like, and I talked to John about this as well. I know Portland's is the city that works for you, and sometimes that can be a joke, you know? And, but no one can joke about pride. I mean, that's something that our, that our coaches and our educational system teaches all the way through. And it'd be kind of nice for the city to carry that through as well. Anyway, I'll look for, I want to kind of push that if I can. And I want to push it with the staff organizing that little slogan, if possible. And I kind of put that on John's lap, so I just wanted you to know that. I mean, I, I think it's important.
That's what I wrote my last Gazette article about.
That's where I got the idea. Thank you. I want to thank Terry Moss, our, our police chief, for helping with the homeless situation. And I know that this sounds abrupt, but having a ordinance and drafting an ordinance of no camping on, in our community on, in the, in the public right-of-ways and in the, in the public, in the public lands, has really helped, because it gives you folks an avenue to reach those people and direct them to the proper resources, to CAT, to mental health, to any of those proper resources that will help them out. And I, and I think that's a, I think that's a step in the right direction. And we have not got off base on doing that. It isn't out of hand. And you walk, you go around our community, and we know that there's homeless people in certain other properties on our, in our community, but not on the cities. And I, and I feel very strong about that. And I, I, I think it, I think it gives our, our police, who are very sensitive to homeless, the homeless situation, a tool to work with. Otherwise, what's happening in Portland is just big arguments and, and miscommunications and pushing and shoving and, and seems to be more of a division rather than everyone working together. Anyway, I just wanted to, because you helped draft that ordinance, and I, I appreciate it so much. I think it's functioning very effectively at this point. We still have a lot of work to do with our homeless. So, but in the meantime, that, that helps.
When reports are done, could I go back? We have a do-over, so I can piggyback on that.
If you want to, you can go ahead right now.
Okay. Okay, we, I just wanted to say that we just completed our fifth crisis intervention training week. I think we're making progress. They're forty-hour trainings where we provide first responders with tools to safely de-escalate people in mental health crisis. This is all, Terry is our fearless leader in this also. So I just want to appreciate that leadership and say that it was a very successful week. I think it was one of our best. We had a good class. They were really interactive.
Good.
And thanks to the council for helping support that.
Yes. Okay, I don't have too much. I wanted to discuss the Boise property as far as what was recommended by our staff a while ago, was to have, I'm talking the white paper property, have the wetlands identified. I think that's the first step that we need to do, and we need to do it sooner than later. And then decide on what we're going to have surveyed. And I would like to see this maybe brought up as a topic in our work, work session, because I also would like to see about getting some of that property also addressed as far as some of the, the rock outcroppings leveled, so it is suitable for business to come in. And so I'd like to also, us to discuss pursuing a, whether it be a rock pressure or something like that, whether we hire it privately, keep all the rock, but just get the discussion going. But first and foremost, we have to identify the wetlands, as Sue reported to us a while ago. And then we should actually be getting a real survey over there. And then, uh, we should actually be getting a real survey over there for the nine point five at least two and, uh, any, any other areas that we, uh, um, it's what you have to do as standard. Eh, eh, anytime you go to build, you have to.
This is about our industrial park that we want to put in there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
But, uh, I, I think the rock could also be utilized on the, uh, and be an incentive for a developer, um, if we haul some of it over to this, uh, property as well. The, uh, veneer property, rock's very expensive. And when you got it and you could just crush it for next to nothing, um, it still only costs what it costs to do that, so, um, it's a cost that could also entice somebody. So, um, and then, uh, I had, uh, yesterday afternoon, Emily Chapman, who is Sophie, um, reached out and was, um, interested in starting a, um, cafe and a gift shop here in St. Helens. Her current lease is getting ready to run up where she's at. Um, she wants to move to our area. I told her I would reach out to council today and, uh, let you guys know because you know a lot of business people and property owners as well as I do. And, uh, maybe we could connect some dots for her, line her up with somebody, you know, and, uh, um.
Yep.
Eh, eh, I, I have her cell number, so, uh, which, and I told her I'd be in contact with her, uh, next week sometime just because, you know, I mean, that we entice any business to come, welcome any business to come to St. Helens. And, uh, so, eh, any, eh, you know, I know, uh, a cafe, eh, eh, there's very select buildings out there, so that's why I guess I figured I'd bring it to the whole council's attention, you know, as far as making something like that fit. She also asked about grants and stuff like that, which is not really our thing. It's up to her. Like any business, you have to put together a business plan and apply through banks and, and whatnot, so that's really up to her, but, um, still.
Which part of town does she want to be in?
Uh, you know, I'm guessing probably the old town here, you know? Um, that's why I'd be guessing, but, uh, it's kind of neat. Somebody who hadn't been here since they were six years old. Shows back up and was like, eh, here for two or three days. About, about right, John? Two or three days for?
Yeah, a day and a half, yeah.
Yeah. And, uh, is ready to invest and move this way. Pretty cool, so.
And we have some possible, some vacancies.
Yeah, yep. So, um.
How many good places is she looking for?
You know, eh, eh, that's something that, uh, you know, could re-mail her and ask her or call her. I got, I got her number and you guys could, uh, feel free to call too as well.
Okay.
Um, so I will line you up on that, but I just figured that was, you know, kind of cool that, uh, you know, um, she reached out. I didn't see anybody else CC'd, so I wanted to inform everybody this was going on.
Thanks.
Yep. So, uh, other than that, um, good, good turnout on Halloween town this weekend. Um, and again, uh, good, good, uh, um, kudos to the St. Helens Police Department and actually county, state, uh, seeing Rainier. I think, uh, Scapu's having one officer here too as well. It was, uh, um, good to know that behind the scenes, people did not see where they were located at and it was just good strategic placement and, uh, knowing that, that was all there was comforting to me. And I want the citizens to know that. They were definitely well taken care of. So, uh, um, eh, and, you know, John, your, your leadership has proven to be, um, successful eh, eh, in not only just that, but also in our administration to a department, so, um, I just wanted to give you a compliment because, uh, I think you need it.
Thank you.
Yep.
And deserve it.
Yep. So with that, now I think it's time. Uh, the time is three oh eight PM and our next agenda item is executive session. Now I get a motion to move it into executive session under ORS one nine two six point six six zero two E, real property transaction.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. The council has moved and council, this is all changed a little bit, so, council has moved and councillor Locke, Morton, Khan, Mayor Scholl, oh, wait, wait a minute. Councillor, I have to do this right. I'm sorry. No, I'm following your guideline here. So, uh, it says that councillor Khan so moved and councillor Morton seconded to go into executive session. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Uh, representatives of the news media, staff and other persons as approved shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All others members of the audience are asked to leave the council chambers. Representatives of the media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No final action or decision may be made in executive session. Okay, now we'll give Kathy a few minutes to shut down the live broadcast.
Got a question.
We're not live streaming.
So my question is, why do we have a digital clock now? Is there the impression that we can't read the other kind?
Of what?
Okay. Oh.
Okay, we are now back in the work session and, uh, councillor Khan is talking about our clock on the wall.
I do have one other thing.
Uh, yes, Kathy.
Um, on the agenda for the regular session tonight is a declare surplus property for electrical equipment.
Mm-hmm.
It's like compute, a lot of computer equipment, fax machines and stuff. Um, I just learned that there's a bunch more that Max just declared or wants to declare, so I added that and I'll give you guys a new slip for that.
Where does that stuff, where does it end up?
They recycle it. It goes to a place down in Portland. Keith might know the name of it.
It's, and it's because of the hardware that it has to go there that we have or?
They take the hard, the.
They take them all apart and they, people can build their own there with, by donating so many hours. They, they build computers for schools and
Oh, really?
People that need computers and all this kind of stuff. And so they can repurpose this stuff.
I was just curious if they did that type of stuff over here right across the street? Okay.
It's called Computer Geeks, I believe is what it's called in Portland, something like that.
That's why I was asking. I was just wondering if there's anybody.
I've got a question for Keith. When is that chair right down there going to be filled with this one?
That one?
With a youth council member like we talked about in the envisioning of youth council. And it's been what, a couple of years, three years now that we've had?
We did talk about that at our last meeting the other day and, uh.
Maybe if somebody doesn't want to do it consistently.
It's hard to get somebody here because we're, it's, they're at school right now.
No, no, not in the evening.
In the evening.
Yeah. No, we did talk about that and, and so we, we just had new, uh, uh, elections for officers and everything, so now they're, they'll, I'll have them appoint somebody to do that, so.
Or they could rotate, so they each could.
Rotate would be great.
It's, it's, yeah.
It'd be good to see a face in here and just, and just, if they don't have to report.
I'm going to have to clean up my stuff.
But just to get a, yeah, keep Susan happy over there. And Kathy, where's the council, where's the, um, um, the council booth going to be and can you elaborate a little more on that?
Uh, it's going to be at the police department. I don't know where the table's going to be.
Okay. And then what date, what date is that?
Thirty first.
It's October thirty first.
And what time?
Five to seven.
Five to seven. Okay, thanks.
Is it five to seven or five to eight? I thought it was five to, no, it could be wrong.
I have five to eight.
I could be wrong too.
I think, I think it is five to eight.
I just want to get that.
But I may.
I think it's three hours. Yeah, um, Perry, I'm, I'm sure Melinda, I'm sure Melinda has five to eight.
Linda knows.
No, Tuesday. It's Tuesday.
October thirty first.
Oh, it's the thirty first, okay.
Halloween.
I'll be there.
Okay, great.
Okay?
Okay, good.
All right, thanks.
Anybody else got anything they want to discuss before I close this? We're adjourned.
Okay.
Thank you. Well done.